We're going to have to.
Here we go.
There we go. All right. Welcome, everybody, to the February seventeenth Town Council meeting. Let the let the record read that the entire council is present is present at this time. Well, I asked you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, but the eyes to America, to the Republic. He stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you with us, Holly? I know how his screen froze.
Boy, it's this is a problem. We can handle it if.
I think as long as the recordings all will be okay. She'll figure it out. Okay, next, before I go to approval of the agenda, I've got some really good news to share with everybody. I just can't wait until the mayor's report. Jay Barry, I understand you're a godfather. I mean, a grandfather again.
I am. Thank you, Mayor. Everybody's happy and healthy and couldn't be happier myself. So thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Makes me feel.
What year girl?
Another boy. So he's got a three year old brother and now she's going to bring him home tomorrow morning. So I'm sure he'll be real happy about that.
What's our newest guy's name?
Ah, Jet, J E T T.
Jet. Okay. So he said, well, go to my New York Jets hat.
There you go. There you go. That might have something to do with it.
Very good. Okey doke. Approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it? At this time, we ask, is there any any public comment on any item on the agenda? If so, this is your turn. Hearing none, I'll move on to approval of the minutes of the January twentieth public hearing.
To approve.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the eyes have it. Okay. Approval of the minutes of the January twentieth Town Council meeting.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
And the eyes have it. Okay. Approval of the minutes of the February eighth informational work session.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
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 And the eyes have it. And lastly, approval of the minutes of the February eighth closed session.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the and the eyes have it. Okay. At this time, I've asked Greg Kernan, who we all should should know by now, to introduce himself again to the county council. Greg, are you on the call?
Think he might be muted.
I am on the call. Yes, I am.
You're very good. Most of you on council. No, Greg, he applied for two vacancies and the true volunteer he is, he he's he still wants to serve the town. So while most of you know him, I'm going to still ask Greg if he wants to take a a minute or so and just, you know, say hi to everybody or whatever you want to say, Greg.
First of all, thank you all for allowing me to have this opportunity to apply for the vacancy on the Ethics Commission. I love the town. I love the county. There are no issues and I'd like to keep it that way. And that's all I'm going to say about that. Okay?
That's pretty good. Does does anybody have any any questions of Greg? Okay, well, thanks for volunteering, sir. And you don't have to hang around. We'll we'll do a vote later on in the evening. It's up to you.
Thank you.
And and welcome to the volunteer club. Welcome to the club. Once we reel you in, man, we don't like to let you go.
I want.
Move out of town and get out of here. Okay, very good. Thank you, Greg. At this time, we have a State of the Town presentation. If if Howie's back on the call. If not, we're probably not going to do that. Let me reach out to her. I'll give everybody a.
I don't see her on there.
So what do we need to do?
Yep.
Okay, but it's still it's still recording, right? Okay, then I'll move forward. Okay, I'll I'll move forward. Okay, thanks.
She'll be with us in a jiffy. So let me move down and then I'll go back to Roman numeral six D. We've read Jay's report. If we if we have any questions of Jay, I'll begin with Peggy and work my way around the horn. So Peggy, any questions for Jay?
No, I have no questions for Jay.
Very well. Keith?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Morris?
No question, sir.
Okey doke. Larry?
Yeah, Jay, if you could just clarify under the second item on the wet wells, you state, we have removed all the fallen trees caused by heavy snow from our wet wells and water towers. We really had trees in the wet wells?
We did. Bayview Hills, we had a couple comments actually down in the back of Richfield Station, and we had quite a few. Most of them were on the back road, if you're familiar by Adner's, that goes to the Harbor Road Wellhouse. It's kind of behind Beach Elementary School. We've got, when the event happened, we kind of cut them out of our way and we're just now getting around to really cleaning them up. We we lost more trees in that event than we did in any other event. I've been here for the town. Most of them were kind of out of sight, though.
Wow, well, that that's good. Geez. Thank you. Okay, very good.
No, I have nothing further.
Okay, Valerie?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, is Howie back?
I am, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Okay, very good. Do we want to go over to to the State of the Town now?
Yes, we can do that if you're ready.
As we began 2022, it is important to reflect on the events of the previous year. The year 2021 provided the opportunity for us to focus on.
I've lost I've lost the mayor. I'm not hearing him.
We lost.
No audio.
Yeah, likewise.
Pat or Holly, I don't know. Yeah, you got it. We've lost the audio on that.
The video froze.
Yeah.
I just stopped it. Sorry. I'm not sure why you're not hearing the audio. Just give me one second.
Okay.
No one can hear audio?
No.
Okay.
It kind of froze and I'm stuck looking at myself, which is not a pleasant sight. So I think I may have to leave.
Let me try again.
As we began 2022, it is important to reflect on the events of the previous year. The year 2021 provided the opportunity for us to focus on community, show compassion to our neighbors, and persevere together. Community is more important than ever, and it is what sets Chesapeake Beach apart. Thank you for continuing to check on your neighbors and to make sure everybody is safe. Our theme for this year's State of the Town is community, compassion, and preservation. Our citizens continue to demonstrate the importance of community and display compassion. Our town council remains focused on the preservation of natural resources, small-town charm, and fiscal responsibility. A good example of fiscal responsibility is that your town council is prepared to pass its sixth straight tax decrease. The town council continues to review and implement legislation to preserve our small-town charm and proceed forward with innovative ideas to improve the quality of life for our citizens while making a positive impact on our natural resources. Before we share the progress of our town this past year, I want to share that these efforts would not be possible without the perseverance of our town staff and the many volunteer hours of our citizens serving on boards, commissions, volunteer advisory groups, and committees. Thank you. The town council and I welcome you to the 2022 State of the Town address for Chesapeake Beach. We are positioned well and look forward to continuing to serve the great citizens of Chesapeake Beach in 2022. Thank you.
Hi, Chesapeake Beach. I'm your town administrator, Holly Wall. Welcome to the 2021 State of the Town address. This year, we are providing the state of town to you virtually. However, please visit our website to view the full State of the Town document. Thank you so much. The town council continues to focus on debt reduction with 1.79 million in debt paid off in 2021 and 5.9 million in debt paid off during this administration. There was an overall reduction in expenses in fiscal year 21 that totals $2.3 million and a reduction in property tax, which has continued during this administration. We have an overall improved net position of the town. The town has received several grants in 2021, the largest being $851,520 from DNR Waterway Improvement Funding, and the town has also received funding for Safe Routes to School Design, 100% Design of the Sidewalk Project from Beach Elementary School, as well as Coastal Resiliency Grant Funding. The town inspected 152 rental properties in 2021 and issued 157 rental licenses. Ninety code enforcement violations were issued with 75 cases resolved. In an effort to continue our engagement with citizens, even in a pandemic, elected and appointed officials effectively worked through virtual platforms to continue to conduct town business. The town held over 60 public meetings with over 3,000 unique meeting recording views.
Hello to everyone out there in Chesapeake Beach. If you don't know who I am, I'm Jay Barry, the Public Works Director. I'm sure you've seen myself or our crews out in the street fixing water main breaks or jetting sewer lines or numerous things. I want to spend a minute and tell you about the things we do when we're not responding to an emergency. We take care of and maintain over 50 miles of water and sewer lines every day. We have 2,380 water and sewer connections, and that number is growing. We maintain and run three water towers. We have 12 sewer pump stations. We have 11 diesel backup generators for all our facilities. We maintain and service 40-plus pumps up to 30 horsepower on a daily basis. We have four diesel backup dry prime pumps. We have over five and a half miles of trails and a lot of other things. So I just want to say we're in good shape here in Chesapeake Beach, and we continue to strive to improve ourselves, and we get better every day. Thank you.
The town initiated a contracted services to clean, paint, and provide a logo on the Richfield Station water tower. Both the interior and exterior work has been completed, and the town logo is expected to be installed in the spring of 2022. The town has implemented a new analytics water reading system and concurrently monitor meters remotely with plans to continue to expand that. We have retrofit and installed 300-meter pits to read MXUs from the water tower. We've completed a master walkability plan in coordination with the town's Walkable Community Advisory Committee under the leadership of Councilman Derek Fabre, Councilman Fink, and now Councilwoman Hartman. This plan has been incorporated into the town's comprehensive plan and establishes priorities and potential grant opportunities for pedestrian walkability throughout town. Through the use of highway user revenues, the town has paved over 22,000 square yards of town roads at no cost to residents. We've reached Phase Two of our Safe Routes to School project with 80% funded by the state, 20% funded by the town to add our sidewalks to Beach Elementary School, to Chesapeake Village, and a portion of Old Bayside Road. The town continues to upgrade LED streetlights throughout the town. The town provided germ control and UV sanitation at Town Hall and conducted some repairs to a failing retaining wall at the Seventeenth Street and Boardwalk entrance. We've also established internet connection along the railway trail for reliable cameras, and we've installed those new cameras and have improved monitoring of those devices. We've completed repairs to the Callum's Field bathrooms to provide an updated and clean appearance and installed cameras that capture both the fields and its entrances. Sea level rise planning is underway with surveying being conducted to take an inventory of low-lying areas to determine short and long-range plans to address flooding in the future. We've in general reorganized staffing responsibilities to ensure that we can focus on opportunities to provide additional green space. Working closely with the Callum's Revitalization Committee chaired by Councilman Fink and Councilman Morris, we are seeking ways to provide more spaces for residents to join, gather, and have events. We've also converted a space within Callum's to Bermuda grass to match the center field, providing more practice area and event space. The field is open to the public with further openings and events planned to expand its use.
Hello. For you out there who doesn't recognize me, my name is John Castro. I'm the superintendent of the Chesapeake Beach Water Reclamation Plant. For the year 2021, we had a little more challenges than 2020, but we're getting used to that. And we still didn't have any spills or any violations for 2021. The permit also for our nutrient removal for the E and R plant, I'm going to turn it over to my assistant, Josh Diddit, who's the assistant superintendent here at the Water Reclamation Plant. Josh?
In addition to the no spills and no upsets in the plant, we managed to only put out 31% for our nitrogen, 54% for phosphorus, and only 2% for total suspended solids for the total allowable limits dictated by the state of Maryland for discharge to the Chesapeake Bay. In addition, we've implemented a maintenance program where we can better track and maintain our equipment here at the plant to get us from being in a reactive mode to more of a proactive mode in relation to our maintenance program.
As the town continues to operate with no spills and no violations, and the town plant is operating at a lower level than permitted by the state, it allows the town to enter those totals that could have been used into the Maryland Department Environment Nutrient Trading Program to be utilized by other plants that need access to additional levels that are not permitted. The town continues to work through ongoing projects to continue the operational efficiency at the plant. Plant staff also continues to work to obtain a MDE groundwater discharge permit for water reuse to irrigate the town's sporting fields and landscaping areas for overall water conservation. The Chesapeake Beach Water Park continued to operate at a limited capacity and received positive feedback from town and county guests. The water park served as the 11th largest employer in the county, employing 157 employees with 35% from the town of Chesapeake Beach and remaining employees Calvert County residents. While maintaining a limited capacity, gross sales has have rebounded. A comparison of the attendance levels shows the decrease of crowds at the park provided a more comfortable experience for all guests while maintaining the revenue necessary to invest and improve in the park. The park operated at a 33% capacity level, which provided improved safety. The town restricted the guest count to 33% of the legal capacity, that's 450 from the original 1,363. So a 66% decrease from the legal capacity with town and county only in 2021 on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, allowing days for town and county guests at a lower attendance. The decreased attendance level provided an increased ability for our lifeguards to conduct safety checks, water monitoring with clear viewpoints of guests. We utilized electronic reservation registration to monitor attendance expectation and utilized online food ordering to decrease lines and improve social distancing.
Hi, my name is Carla Richard, and I'm the Operations Manager for the Town of Chesapeake Beach.
And I'm Martha Kennedy, the Park Manager for the Chesapeake Beach Water Park.
We want to ensure the town residents that we have their best interest in mind and believe that the 2022 season will be our best season yet.
We continue to provide a safe and educational environment for our town and county's youth to be employed by the Town of Chesapeake Beach. The professional and life-saving skills that our employees gain from being employed at the town are priceless and will follow them throughout their professional and adult life.
Safety is our number one priority in opening the park this season, followed by precision in our business practices and bringing back some of those special events that the residents both enjoy here at the park and around town.
Check out our website in the upcoming months for updates on rates, events, and other exciting opportunities the 2022 season will bring.
We look forward to seeing you and your families this season. See you soon.
The Planning Commission continued to work through the 2021 Comprehensive Plan and held a public hearing at the end of 2021 and just recently approved the final version of the plan in January of 2022. All information related to the plan can be found at planchesapeakebeachmd.gov. The plan is currently before the town council for review and further public comment. Sea level rise mapping has been updated and reviewed as well in public meetings and incorporated into the comprehensive plan. There's an expanded knowledge and awareness of climate change and its impacts to the town. The town has developed a nuisance flooding plan and implemented the Climate Change Advisory Group led by Councilman Jaworski and Councilman Partek. The town issued 170 zoning permits in 2021 and started work on the Department of Natural Resources Coastal Resiliency Grant totaling $150,000 in partnership with the Town of North Beach. The town added an additional deputy to the Town of Chesapeake Beach coverage in 2021 and continued coordination with the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department and the Twin Beach Patrol for safe access throughout town. The Twin Beach deputies responded to over 3,000 calls for service in the town and conducted over 3,000 patrol checks. The Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition, under the leadership of Councilman Partek, continues to provide education and outreach to help save lives by raising awareness of the opioid crisis and educating residents about substance abuse disorders and removing the shame around the health crisis, providing opportunities to seek and get support from the community. Also connecting people in need and their families with available prevention, recovery, and support services. One of the outreach methods of the Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition is to participate in the Light the County Purple event, which lasted through September, which is a Recovery Awareness Month, and giving away 1,200 purple lights to raise awareness about the opioid abuse epidemic. Stay tuned for our Twin Beaches Spring into Health and Wellness Fair planned for May 14th, from 10:00 to 2:00. More information to come. The Town of Chesapeake Beach was named as one of the best places to live in 2021 by Chesapeake family. The town is listed among the major employers in Calvert County, with Rodden Real and Chesapeake Beach Water Park taking a spot on that list. We hosted over 6,000 recreational boaters at the town-owned public boat ramps and hosted our first annual Christmas market supporting local businesses. Outreach conducted by the Economic Development Committee under the leadership of Councilman Jaworski and Councilman Morris engaged our local businesses to gain feedback such as changes to our website to further attract patrons to their establishments. The image to the right is a new update to our site to more easily link guests to local businesses. The town established a work local campaign posting positions of local businesses and the town. Under the leadership of Councilwoman Bodine, the Green Team has been very busy working on local projects to improve sustainability of the town while utilizing opportunities for outreach. Seabox continued to develop the Old Rock Reef with additional reef balls donated by the Coastal Conservation Society and participated in the Chesapeake Bay Foundation project to place 79 giant reef balls at Old Rock Reef in Holland Point. Seabox has partnered with Adner's to utilize Adner's hatchery to grow oysters in 2022 and is planning on planting over 2 million oysters in the bay in the very near future. Seabox hosted over 1,000 students, teachers, and chaperones for the fifth-grade oyster field trips in Chesapeake Beach. Key opportunities in 2022 include further engagement on our comprehensive plan, open green space and pocket park expansion engagements, sea level rise planning. We have a steering committee that is currently being formed for some further input from citizens on sea level rise as well as input on sidewalks and soft safe crossings through our Walkable Communities Advisory Group. The mayor and town council and town staff look forward to serving you in 2022.
Well, thank you, Holly. Thank you, Holly. Thank you, the entire town staff. Thank you, town council, for making all this happen, and thank you to the volunteers who dedicate their personal time. That's what this was all about. So great work, Holly Wall. But don't go anywhere. You're next on the agenda. Town administrators report, Howie, do you want to highlight anything before I turn questions over to the council?
No, Mayor, I do not. And I'm just going to try to get this video off so I can get to our regular screen. But no, I do not.
Okay, do you want me? Do you want us to give you a second to take care of all this?
Uh. Yes. If you don't mind.
We don't mind.
Mayor, I didn't know if we finished with questions for Public Works or not, sir.
We did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is Holly good?
I'm I'm not good. It's for some reason, it's not. I'm having all kinds of issues this evening.
All right, I'm going to get back to the town administrators report. Water Reclamation Treatment Plant, we've read John's report. If we have any questions, I'll begin with with Valerie.
No, no questions.
Okay, Charlie?
I think you should begin with Larry. I have no questions.
Larry?
Yeah, John, any update on the effluent biomonitoring? I know it was completed the week of January 24th to get the test results back yet. You're on mute, John. John, you're on mute.
Okay, there's your questions. Larry, Greg, you got any questions? Well, we'll give John a minute or two. Did he freeze up or anything?
None for me either.
Yeah.
I think he's just muted.
Did John freeze up, Larry? See?
No. No, he's still active. I just can't hear you. It shows him being on mute. Whoops. All right.
Well.
Just move on. It's okay.
Let's get back to John. Okay, code enforcement of report, we we've read Connie's report beginning with with Peggy. Do we have any questions?
No, I have no questions on it.
Okay, Keith?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Morris?
None for me, sir.
Thank you, Larry?
No questions. Just keep up the good work, Connie. Thanks for hanging in there.
Thank you.
Very good. Charlie?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, Valerie?
Just an observation, Connie. This report seems a lot smaller than normal. What do you attribute that to? It's like a lot fewer pages and a lot fewer issues, which is good.
The Valerie, I took out the summary pages, so now you're only seeing the actual case note pages. The summary pages are no longer there. Valerie, I took out the summary pages, so now you're only seeing the actual case note pages. The summary pages are no longer there.
And is it going to stay that way, you think, or is that like a permanent decision?
I'm sorry, I'm having a real hard time, as Holly is. Something is definitely going on here with the connections this evening. Can you repeat that?
Probably the wind.
You're going to keep it that way without having the summary pages anymore?
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing it.
Connie, I can, maybe I can, Valerie, we can add the summary pages in. The only reason we had taken it out was after the last meeting. It seemed to be a little confusing with what was in the report. So we can definitely, if you'd like to have that added back in, we can add the summary page back in, if that's helpful.
It is.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. No treasurer's report, town engineers report, we've read Wayne's report. Is Wayne on the call to take any questions?
He is.
Okay, starting with Valerie, if you have any questions of Wayne, well.
I do have a town treasurer question, though. Can we ask questions even though there's no report?
Sure, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I was wondering. We brought it up a few times about the funds that we're going to be getting, the $2.9 million. And I was wondering. When we could have a town council discussion or a larger discussion on how those funds could be potentially used and then come up with brainstorming ideas on what approaches we want.
That's a great idea. I was going to bring it up in my mayor's report, but I'll let Holly answer that question now.
I was going to suggest that maybe we can have a March work session?
We're, as I said, we've already, unless I'm on mute, as we said, we just had a discussion earlier today on this and I'll let Holly answer it. I was going to do this in my mayor's report. You want to summarize this, Holly?
Sure, mayor. So we are going to be issuing a memo to town council with some further information on the funding. And we do have a plan to bring this before town council in the very near future in a town meeting.
As a follow-up. When you say memo and a plan, like, have decisions already been made about how this is going to? Are we open for like an open conversation about ideas?
Oh, it will absolutely be a conversation about ideas. There's been no decisions made. We are just formalizing some of the information that we've already sent to the town council to outline some options. And then we will meet about that in a town meeting.
Like in a work session in March or soon?
Probably May.
What's the delay to have a conversation about what we could? About ideas? Why so many months away?
Maybe you're not understanding, and I'll apologize for that. You are going to receive a request for information on what you recommend very, very soon.
I think in my personal opinion, it would be really nice. That if separate emails coming in to Holly or whomever to to just have a brainstorming conversation so that ideas flow.
Yes, yes, that's what we're going to do. Thank you.
And then regarding the engineer's report. I have no questions.
Okay, Charlie?
I have no questions.
Thank you.
Just Wayne, the usual question, any updates on 261 sidewalks?
Yes, we received word back, I owe the S H A some more information about the waterway takings. They're working through their NEPA study. I need to get that to them hopefully tomorrow or Monday. Beyond that, we're still waiting for the S H A's contract with us from 100% construction documents as far as I know. And waiting for their 30% review. I've actually called the reviewer two or three times for the 30% and I'll continue to follow up.
Okay, thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, Larry. Greg?
Yeah, I don't have any questions for Wayne, but I was wondering how we kind of jumped from ARPA to town engineer. I had a few comments to add in about ARPA, but.
Add, you can add them now, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know that I was in attendance at the Southern Maryland Municipal League meeting last night. And they had a special, an expert there and they were specifically talking about ARPA and the uses. And they boiled it down, it was really nice little presentation they had. And basically, they were, the expert was saying that the that the funds can be used for anything that is traditional government service. And they gave some excellent examples. He specifically said police cars. Of course, public works projects, stormwater management efforts, parks, property acquisition. In advancing government services. So there's really quite a, quite a array of options there. And it was a really exciting meeting because all the municipalities that were there were super excited and charged regarding the ARPA funds that they had received. I know that La Plata was just beside himself. They had received, well, the two years combined, they received just under, I think it was about nine and a half million dollars and some change. They had 18 projects already earmarked. And it was, it was really enjoyable to hear the different municipalities talking about how within their own groups. Their own councils and their own mayors and some of them, their communities already, that they are having open discussions regarding the use of these funds. And again, it was kind of startling. It kind of, they're way down the road and they're super excited. You know, a small fact, the funds were awarded based on population. I don't know what the multiplier on the other end of that is, but population was a factor there. But, you know, I'm looking forward to kind of experiencing some of that excitement that they were having, so.
It's going to be exciting. Thank you. It's going to be exciting. Did you have any comments for the engineer, sir?
No, sir, no comments for Wayne. Thank you.
Okay, Keith?
No comments on the engineer's report, thank you.
Peggy?
I have just had a question for my education. On the UV protection RFP. What are launders covered, launder covers?
They are, they are covers that go over top of the sewage treatment plant to keep UV light out, which allows algae to grow.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, I'm going to skip back to Holly. Holly, were are you able to take questions on the, when the town administrators report? Where did we leave off with you there?
Yes, mayor, I am.
Okay, now let me begin with Peggy and take it from there. Peggy, did you have any questions for Holly?
Yeah, I have a question on a term because I don't understand it. Under number five events, Holly, there is the health fair in May 14th. It says this is an exiting event. What's an exiting event?
That could be a typo.
Oh, it's the second line. After.
I'll be exciting.
Exciting.
Okay.
Well, you will exit and it's over at 2 o'clock, just to. Keith?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank Holly and Carla for all their help on the planning with the health fair, health fair thus far. So appreciate it.
And Greg?
No questions other than I was wondering if we're planning on Stars and Stripes this season?
Yes.
No other questions, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Larry?
Question and a comment under the federal dredge preparation said the Corps put the project out to bid in February. Is there a date when they're going to open the bids?
I have not seen it actually released yet. I did check last week and I have not seen it posted. I've been following up, so I once it is live, I'll make sure we have information on the bid on our website.
Okay, and then under the events item on the staff working with, work staff at the fire department for the partnering upcoming town events for the community. Let me know if I can help with that.
Thank you.
That's all. And Charlie?
Two things real quick. First of all, I echo Keith's comments, Councilman Pardak's comments. You know, we we had a meeting and you just realize how much work Holly and Carla and everyone else does when we plan these events. And then I had one question about the camera upgrades that you note here, Holly. I'm a little bit curious. About where the, so I'm out there all the time. I know there's cameras over the, over the Osprey nest, but we also have cameras that are, that are on the people using the trail. I can think of one location where I can picture those right at the T. Is this? Is this clearly marked and is there some, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble phrasing the question. My concern bluntly is that we're, you know, big brother here. So if we are big brother and some people probably like the security. Are the cameras really clearly marked throughout the trail so people are aware that they are there?
Yes, and Jay can speak probably more clearly on actually the locations. But it's not so much of capturing those that are walking. The main reason for the cameras, and we have had some incidents in town. Where our deputies have to go back to the footage and review it if something occurred or if they're searching for something in particular or an incident that took place. And so really it's a deterrent. And we will check the signage and just make sure that it's very clear to see if we need to add any additional signage of the cameras because again, I think the signage alone deters activity as well.
Yeah, there's a little bit of a slippery slope there and I'm not coming down on one side or the other of this. There's a lot of nuance here. You know, some of the cameras that are available are available on the website, right? So you can go to, you can go see the Osprey. And that's outstanding, but I wouldn't want the public to be able to just go browse footage of the other cameras if they're there for security access to that. That content should be tightly controlled. I don't have anything, I'm not asking for some sort of resolution here, but if there's a follow-up discussion to be had, I wouldn't mind learning a little bit more about it. Thanks.
Sure. Thank you, Charlie. And Valerie?
No questions, they were asked.
Okay, thank you. Is John Castro on the call?
Yes, mayor.
Okay, John, we left off with Larry. Larry had a question for you. I don't know if you heard it or not.
Yes, I did hear it and I hit the wrong button and I lost the screen for a little bit. But to answer Larry's question, this week we did get the first result of the biomonitoring and we did pass the biomonitoring which involves the the fish and the crabs and everything out in front of us in the Chesapeake Bay. We passed all those tests and we're still waiting on the chemical analysis to come in. Hopefully we'll have that in a week or two. So that's, that's a big deal there. We do that every year. And as long as we pass these tests. We're good for another year.
Great. Thank you, John. And I'm also now just generally interested in the results of that, but also in terms of PFAS from the research lab. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Greg, any questions for, for John?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, Keith?
No additional questions, thank you.
Peggy?
No question, thank you.
Okay, deputies' report is, is Lieutenant Hollinger on the call?
Yes, sir, right here.
Okay, starting with Valerie, do we have any questions of Lieutenant Hollinger?
No questions, just an observation. This is an extremely light report, so that's kind of nice in a way. So no questions, just an observation.
Charlie? CDS is, I'm embarrassed by this, I just Googled it, but I guess this is a controlled substance. Is that what that is?
Yes, anywhere you see CDS, that's controlled dangerous substance. So any kind of illegal drugs. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Indeed. Larry?
No real questions, just to again clarify. There's another abbreviation here, L E O, law enforcement officer, just for anybody who's reading Lieutenant Hollinger's report. And Lieutenant, stay safe. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Indeed. Greg?
No questions from me, thank you. Okay, I can hardly hear you, Greg. I don't know if it's me or, sorry, I just speak up. No questions, thank you. That's fine, sir, thank you. Keith?
No questions, thank you.
And Peggy?
No questions. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Indeed. Yes, thanks, Joe. We all appreciate it. North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, if we have any questions, we can funnel them through Larry as always.
Can I just add something, mayor?
Please do, sir.
Just two things. One, just for general information, the department has a new engine 12 under construction. We had several of the members fly out there the other day for inspection. We hope to get the new engine 12 in in the next month, a month and a half. And for anybody who doesn't know, our annual Sportsman's Bash is back on for Saturday, March 12th. But I have to share with you that tickets are sold out, so. Thank you.
So we're back to normal?
Yes.
Normal's a good thing. Okay. Thank you, Larry. Mayor's report. Three things. One, I just want to say that it's an honor to be associated with this town council as it prepares to decrease the tax property rate for the sixth year in a row. That's, that's clearly a record for the town of Chesapeake Beach and probably most towns in the state of Maryland. Yesterday, I was fortunate to attend the Maryland Board of Public Works meeting. Lieutenant Governor Rutherford, Tom Trauer, Frank Cho, and Treasurer Davis approved the $150,000 in program open space grants for the, for our town. I want to thank these three gentlemen, as well as Senator Jackson and the Board of County Commissioners for their support. Once again, special shout out to Delegate Mark Fisher, who back almost a year ago identified this opportunity for the county designated funds to come to both beach towns. And he was successful. He was joined by everybody in the above. And once again, you know, shout out for Mayor Mike Betten, who relentlessly followed that money trail to ensure that the 30K in grants did come to both towns. This is bipartisanship at its best, you know, Democrats and Republicans working as one to help our town. So that's a fabulous thing. And lastly, spring is coming. The town has a full slate of special events planned for 2022, beginning with the Easter Festival at Callens Field on April the 9th. And that's it, thank you. Next, introduce ordinance O-22-1 in ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach adopting the annual budget for the general fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of '22 to June 30 of '23 and setting municipal tax rates. I set the public hearing for March the 17th at 6:50 p.m. Next, introduce ordinance O-22-2 in ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach adopting the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plant of fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of '22 to June 30 of '23. Set the public hearing for March the 17th at 6:55 p.m. Introducing ordinance O-22-3 in ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach adopting the annual budget for the mitigation fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 2022 to June 30 of 2023. Set the public hearing for March the 17th at 6:58 p.m. And lastly, introduce ordinance O-22-4 in ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, adopting the comprehensive plan. I set the public hearing for Tuesday, March the 29th at 6 o'clock. That will be a special meeting and it'll be well advertised. Thank you. Reports, planning and zoning, we've read Larry's report. If we have any questions of Larry. I can begin with Valerie and work our way around the horn. I assume Larry's on the call.
Yes.
Any questions?
First of all, I'd like to really thank you and the board for the months and years of work on this comprehensive plan. It's really appreciated. I do have what I'll say is an observation and I shared it at the work session with Krista Cubey at the Center. And that is, he made a statement during his presentation that the proposed land use map ought to match the planning and zoning. that the proposed land use map ought to match the planning and zoning map that we vote on separately. And my comment when he made that to him was then, I would expect that map here very soon because if it's to match what's in the comprehensive plan, then basically it's almost a copy of what's in the comprehensive plan. And then I asked him further and said that if anything changes between what is in the comprehensive plan and the planning and zoning map that were provided, then a description of why that change occurred. And I know some people I am interested in knowing how the commission felt, so maybe the voting record of that change. So I guess my comment or my hope or my expectation is, is that when we look at the proposed comprehensive plan, land use map, that it matches what we're provided, um, to vote on separately. And I wouldn't expect that to take too long because it's copy and paste. And then for any changes that do occur, the rationale why and then the
Everybody's from
will be unanimous or not. Um, so when Chris said that the two should match, I also questioned or commented, had the same exact comment to him. And so other than that, I, I, I think we need, I always approach this comprehensive plan and this whole process as three legs to a stool. You need all three legs in order for it to stand up. So we have the comprehensive plan, which I've listened to every one of y'all's meetings and I think it was done in good faith and it's quite a document and I commend you. And now I'm looking for those other two legs. One is the map, which is the where, that's legally where something can be. And the third leg is the what. And those are the amendment changes to section 290. And that says what legally can go where. And so I think the where ought to be pretty close because it ought to match what's in the comprehensive plan. And the what is, um, the section 290 code changes because with what we're going to be voting on next month or whenever, um, the third whereas clause of what we just introduced says shall be consistent. The fourth whereas clause says shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And it's the adoption of the zoning laws, plan development, ordinances and regulations, subdivisions and stuff, fourth whereas clause. And so it all kind of fits together as a cohesive unit. And so really it's no questions, Larry, except to say thank you for all of your efforts. Thank you for the board's efforts. And I think it's imperative that these three legs, the comprehensive plan which we have, the map which I'll soon and the zoning changes come together as, 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 as soon as possible. So I look forward to the, the comments that we get from the town residents and businesses on Tuesday, March 29. And so that's my, my comment. And for any changes, like I said, I really request that we have the rationale why between what's in the comprehensive plan and the map that's introduced and then the voting record so that we can see what was unanimous and what was not. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Charlie?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, you know, again, I just another, another echo of thank you. Uh, yeah, you're probably getting tired of hearing that, Larry, but maybe not. Councilman Bodine, uh, but I just said something that actually caught my attention, um, and I'm hoping that she uh, just made a small mistake and I'm, I'm, and Valerie, I'm not giving you a hard time. I'm just curious. You said voting on next month, but our public hearing isn't even until March 29th. So I would assume that, um, I, that just sent a bit of panic through me because I'm, the, the, I still have questions um, and some feedback and, and, uh, I would assume that we're not voting on this next month.
She corrected herself, Charlie.
Uh, okay, I apologize. That good.
Any other comments, Charlie?
Um, yeah, I do have a, and I apologize if this is not, um, the best form for this. I'm happy to take it offline, but what is the process for us to provide comments at this point in the plan?
I think, uh, I think, you know, public comment is public comment. So if you, if you have a comment that you wanted to make and, and have it put into the public folder, uh, please do so.
Okay, that, that, that's a good answer and I can do that. Thank you. Uh, that's all I have at this point.
Very good. Uh, Larry?
Thank you. I have, uh, already submitted some comments and, uh, concerns on specific sections in the draft comprehensive plan. Uh, just a, and Mr. Brown, I don't expect you to answer this tonight, but just a general question. I have hunted all through the document and I cannot find anything in there that defines, uh, how we will measure building height. I have, I see in there where the proposal is to limit building height in Chesapeake Beach to 35 feet, but I don't see anywhere in there as to how that's going to be measured. Although I remember at one of the public meetings, the discussion was that that would be changed to be measured from grade level, not the first occupied, uh, level of a structure. So we might want to clarify that at some point. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Yeah, the, um, uh, the commission forwarded a proposed ordinance on building height. And I believe it has, uh, a lot more details than what was in, in the plan. We forwarded that a couple of months ago.
Sorry, I missed, I missed that, Mr. Brown. I'll go find it. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Uh, Greg, Mr. Morris?
Um, yeah, thanks, Larry. Thanks for being in attendance. Um, yeah, I would like to just reiterate, underscore a couple of points I was making, um, during the work session with Chris's, uh, presentation. It was a very good presentation. Um, I think all of us are pretty impressed with the, the document that you all put together. Um, it's been interesting reading. Uh, the land use map should be adjusted to match the new comprehensive plan as soon as possible, you know, after, uh, the new comp plan is, uh, approved. That seems to be important. And then the, um, I know we've been talking about this for a while, but, um, in councils deliberating um, any controversial items in the plan. Keenly interested in how the commission voted on those controversial items. Um, was there a unity? Unanimous voting on something or where was there some division? Uh, I think that may help some of us find our way, uh, through some of the voting that, that's bound to be in front of us, uh, on changes. So other than that, um, I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to again echo with thanks to Larry and the commission for all the work they've done and also for the detailed report that he provided, uh, for tonight. And no additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Peggy?
Uh, yeah, same thing. I'd like to just thank them for the, the summary report, for the big detail report. So I can remember where I want to go back and look at more, more, more parts of it. Thank you so much with that.
Very good. Uh, no Board of Appeals hearing, uh, Sea Box, uh, John, are you on the call?
I'm here.
Anything you want to tell us?
Uh, yes, it looks like, uh, Sea Box is going to have a very active year this year. Starting out with a whole lot of reef balls being made by local schools. We're then going to get our oyster spat from the state. And then we're going to get oyster larvae, which we will put into the hatchery. And then at the end of the year, of course, we will have our school kids coming to the trail. So it's, it's like it's going to finally be a nice, healthy and busy year for Sea Box. Thank you.
Spectacular, John. Uh, uh, climate change control, I mean advisory group, uh, Larry?
Well, we wish we could control it, but we can't. Just one thing on that, uh, as was mentioned in the state of the town, uh, we are moving forward with the flooding and sea level rise steering committee. We hope to have that group up and running here in the next couple of weeks. That group is sort of going to guide the effort of, uh, the overall flooding and sea level rise study. Uh, our, um, planning administrator, Mr. Kubiak, has already put together a work plan and actually is moving forward on some of the elements in there. So we wanted to get the steering committee up and going to help guide that effort. Uh, that's all I have on that, but, uh, co-chair Keith, anything to add?
No, thank you. You got it.
Okay, uh, stay right where you are, Larry EDC.
Yes, um, it's nice to have the screen up there. Uh, I just wanted to point out to everyone who's joining in this meeting. If you go to the town website, as you see on the screen there, up on the top bar, the third item over or fourth item over says businesses. If you click on that link, you will find a list of all the businesses in our town. At least the ones that we have information on. So I just wanted to ask if, uh, you are looking at this and take a look at that list and are a local business and you're not on that list, please contact Town Hall. So we can put you on the list. As was mentioned, uh, earlier, uh, co-chair Mr. Morris and I are going to be contacting local businesses to discuss how our town can support our businesses and how our local businesses can support our town. Uh, Mr. Morris also mentioned that he and I, uh, joined in the Southern Maryland Municipal Association virtual meeting last night. Uh, the key topics, as he mentioned, were the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Uh, one of the, uh, I find interesting aspects of the ARPA funding is that a lot of towns are trying to figure out how to use their money because the good news is there are very few constraints as to how that money can be used. So it's a wonderful challenge for the towns to come up with the programs as to how to spend that money. And that, um, discussion was led by, uh, Tom Reynolds, who's with the Maryland Municipal League. Also on that meeting last night was, uh, Gretchen Hardman, Office of the Governor, who briefed everyone on various, uh, initiatives being considered in this session of the state legislature. And on February 4th, uh, participated in a meeting of the Calvert County Department of Economic Development and the mayors of our town of Chesapeake Beach and our neighboring town of North Beach to just discuss how, uh, the county economic development can work closer with our towns and, and to support the Twin Beaches. Uh, with that, I'll ask the, uh, co-chair, Mr. Morris, if he has any additional comments.
Nothing for me, Larry. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Green Team, Valerie?
Uh, yeah, um, we actually have, uh, a bet coming up. It's exciting. It's March 5th. It's our native bee and pollinator talk at the Northeast Community Center. It's March 5th, Saturday at 10 AM. And some exciting news is not only will we have Sam speaking, Sam Droge, but we'll also have the direct, uh, Program Manager for Sustainable Maryland, Mike Huntinghake. Um, he will be introducing Sam. So it's quite, uh, quite exciting to have the Program Manager for Sustainable Maryland in our town on Saturday, uh, March 5th to introduce our speaker. So, um, I'm making arrangements with Mike tomorrow. Uh, I hope to possibly come around town a little bit. We'll see what his schedule is like. And, uh, so that's very exciting. Um, we've been advertising, we've sent out, uh, flyers to our local schools, Beach Elementary, Windy Hill Middle and Northern. And so it looks like it could be a very good turnout. We've had over 2,000 views on our, uh, on our social media accounts. So that's the first thing. The second thing is we're hoping to move along with, uh, Tree City USA program for urban forestry and canopy. And so we are in the works to become certified and I'm sure there'll be more information coming along on that. Next, uh, just a little side note, um, a group of us, uh, decided to be proactive and we removed, uh, English ivy from the conifers that are across, well, onto 60, um, near Cox Road, near the Chesapeake Beach Welcome Home entrance sign. Uh, you'll notice the pine trees there and, uh, you'll also notice that the ivy is basically gone from those trees. Um, there was like six large industrial sized bags of debris that we removed. Uh, next, uh, we'll have a Chesapeake Beach cleanup, April 30th. That's a Saturday from 9 to 12, which is one of our spring cleanup events. And we'll be meeting at the pavilions, uh, near the water park. And there'll be more information on the website regarding that event. Our next meeting is Thursday, February 24th at 6:30. Uh, it'll be at Town Hall because we still don't know how the weather will be, so, uh, hopefully start last one in Hall. Masking is at this moment still required. And so once again, I just want to reiterate that it's very exciting. Uh, we have the small gym in the Northeast Community Center for the native bees and pollinator talk. It's generating quite a bit of interest. And, uh, I hope that we have a good age grade, a age range there through the contacting of our, our schools and get those folks involved. Um, I understand, I haven't seen it myself, but Sam gives a, quite a good talk. And, uh, as I said, it'll be quite nice to have Mr. Huntinghake there, um, the Program Manager for Sustainable Maryland. So any questions?
Thanks, Val. Kelmsfield, uh, Revitalization Committee, uh, Greg?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just, I guess I just want to point out that, uh, I know that Mexican Associates is working on some, some studies and some planning, uh, regarding Kelmsfield. I believe it's, uh, to be completed for a review with the committee, uh, so we'll be looking forward to that. Although I don't have anything new to report. Uh, Councilman Fink?
I just, uh, noted that the, um, engineer, the, uh, Public Works Report actually noted that cameras also are at Kelmsfield. And I, I just, uh, want to note that that same question, uh, that we talked about on the trail, on, on the Fish Creek Trail probably ought to be raised at Kelmsfield cameras as well, especially as we are encouraging the public, uh, to use the facility.
Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Please.
I'd like to make a, I know we're not debating this, um, right now. Um, I just wanted to follow on behind Councilman Fink's comment. He made a comment twice and I'm certainly open to discussion regarding privacy of the cameras. But I did want to point out that, uh, the county and the state have cameras positioned all over the place. You can get right into the, get right into the website. You can dial in the camera number and pull up a live feed. It's 21st century. You know, I just wanted to say that, that there is a lot of that that is out there. Um, uh, anyway, that was
It's pretty cool stuff. Yeah, thanks.
Yep, and I'm not, uh, like, you know, I'm not, I'm not inherently taking a position one way or the other. And in fact, if there's a way that the cameras help us to make the space available to the public and, and, uh, have some accountability without having to lock the gates as often, that's a win. So that definitely multi, multiple sides to that issue and I, I do appreciate that your comment, Greg.
Thanks, gentlemen. Uh, Keith, uh, Twin Beaches Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we had a meeting of our coalition last Thursday primarily to discuss the health and wellness fair. And, um, you know, basically, what we've done is we're really handing this off to kind of a steering committee for, for the health and wellness. The, the, the opioid coalition got this started, you know, two years ago as a, um, you know, as a committee that's shared by the town of Chesapeake Beach and North Beach. We had the health fair back in 2020 at the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. It was a success. So we're really happy to be bringing it back, uh, to the town and we're also thrilled, um, to have the help of the town administration getting this set up. But, uh, as I had mentioned at our opioid abuse awareness coalition meeting, um, I really just gave them an update on where we are, which I will kind of give you a quick overview. Hopefully, I know it had been mentioned in, in the town administrators' reports. And, um, but you know, basically we're having, kind of focusing on three themes for, for the health there. Uh, one is mental and physical health. The other is kind of fun in the sun. Uh, um, information related to boating, water safety, bike safety, gun safety, that kind of thing. Um, and then fitness and healthy eating, uh, would be the third kind of area. And so kind of some of the anchor, uh, groups that we have involved now are health, uh, the Calvert Health uh, Medical Center, the Calvert County Health Department are kind of our two big ones. And, and we're working on, I think, yeah, working on partnerships with Calvert County Park and Recs. And, um, and working on partnerships with a lot of other folks as well, uh, more to be announced. And, and, uh, again, that's going to be May 14th and there will be a 5K. Uh, the time is, uh, set for 10 to 2 with the 5K starting at 9:30, registration at 8:30. with the 5K starting at 9:30, registration at 8:30 in the morning for that and, and more to come about that. And I think that is all I have for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. Charlie, walkable community advisory group?
Yeah, a couple of things. Just starting off, I want to say that I worked with Keith and, and town staff on some walkable events around that health fair. That, that's going to be a pleasure to work with these guys and we have some neat stuff planned. We're working on some potential giveaways, pedometers, things like that. Possibly doing some QR code scanning to, to set goals for walking the Fishing Creek Trail a certain number of times. Some different types of ideas like that bottled after what Chestnut Land Trust does and some other local county parks. So hopefully we'll be able to piggyback on the, on the good work that Keith is doing around that. The second thing I wanted to note, we had a meeting on, on Tuesday with, with town administrator and Public Works to talk about reviewing and trying to work with state highway to get some additional crosswalks painted. These are mainly along the main state roads as opposed to across them. Marking across the state roads is a whole nother challenge from a bureaucratic standpoint, but we were hopeful, I'm hopeful, maybe the only one that we can get permission to do a better job at marking where sidewalks end, creating a little bit more awareness for pedestrians as they walk north, south along 261 and east, west along 260, as well as some other spots in town. The third thing I want to note is that we do have a lot of projects going on right now that are, that are not as visible as the end product of our walkability plan, our, our master connection plan. And that is a question now of beginning the, the process of working with the appropriate agencies, proper organizations to sort of get permission, get the right documents in place to move those projects forward. So there is a fair amount happening behind the scenes. It's not all as visible as, as it would, we would like because nothing moves as fast as we would like. Then the last point I just added on, in the state of the town, Holly and Holly recognized Derek Favre, Peggy and myself. That's, that's great. We appreciate that and thank you. I just want to add that, you know, we have a really dedicated work of committee members. They've been with us since the beginning, since this committee was formed. Lori Blackwelder, Madeline Blake, Amanda Brown, Jan Rutke and Ed Sikowsky. These guys are at every meeting. They're, they're pestering us, pestering Holly, forwarding a, a, a good amount of content on grants, attending seminars. So it's not just us. It's this really dedicated group of committee volunteers that, that are doing good work for us. And I, I felt that given we were called out in the state of the town, they should be called out as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
That's a good way to end, Charlie. Thank you. No unfinished business, new business. Town council to confirm the reappointment of Ingrid Lamb to the Ethics Commission for a one-year term beginning March 15th of 22. The, the reason for this, as we all know, last month we reappointed Ingrid, but I had forgotten that the, the ethics board had decided that after their initial five-year term, they were going to stagger them, their terms in one, one year, three year and five year. And Ingrid would like to serve the one year. So we need to just reconfirm that her appointment is for one year. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the aye. Ingrid's still on the hook. Town council to consider the reappointment of Peter Furley to the Ethics Commission for a three-year term beginning March 15th of 2022.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. And town council to consider the appointment of Greg Kernan to the Ethics Commission for a five-year term beginning March 15th of 2022. Is there a second? All in favor? And the ayes have it. Welcome, Greg. Town council to consider awarding a contract to Chapman Services Incorporated in the amount of $13,080 and Wires Incorporated in the amount of $2,200 totaling $15,280 to complete the necessary work to install the HVAC system at the Water Park Grill. These items will come from the FY22 Water Park budget. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Town council to consider awarding a contract to Pepsi for beverage services at the Chesapeake Beach Water Park for a three-year term. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this time, I'll ask, is there anybody that in the audience that has a, a public comment? If so, now is the time.
Hi, Mayor. My name's Melanie Loveless and I was just going to inquire about not only the field, I've heard some discussions about Kelmsfield, but also about the tot lot, if there's been any movement or progress in revitalizing the tot lot.
Hey, Melanie, how you been?
Hey, I've been okay. How about yourself?
How do I get a hold of you on that?
Okay. I just had a concern on there recently and I just want to make sure that we were, that it was still on the, on the radar.
Thank you. Okay, council lightning round. Let's begin with Valerie.
Oh, once again, just let me reiterate that the native bee talk is March 5th at the Northeast Community Center. 10:00 a.m. and it'll be in the small gym. It's in cooperation and collaboration with Calvert County Parks and Rec. This is our second event together. Our first was Paddle and Pathway Pickup last year. And we are really looking forward to Sam's talk and to Mike Huntinghake meeting in town. So these are all exciting things and I encourage everyone to provide comments on the comprehensive plan and find a place to comment via the website. And your comments are more than welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Charlie?
Yeah, just a quick note on the comprehensive plan to, to, really for, for the public. You know, there's a lot of stuff in this plan, a lot of work went into it. There are significant impacts to its adoption and that's all good. But we don't want anyone in the public to, to not, to be surprised. So please take the time to review this. That's all I have. I look forward to potentially meeting in person soon. Thank you.
Charlie, Larry?
Yeah, thank you everyone for sticking with us tonight. I just wanted to state for the record that I'm tired of this weather and I'm ready for spring to come very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I don't think you're alone. Greg?
Holy smokes, Larry. You're coming from Chicago.
And that's why I moved from Chicago.
Yeah, okay. Well, since we got Larry in the conversation, I did want to give him, just give a shout out to Larry. He's my inside connection at the firehouse and he hooked me up with two. I mean, I paid for him, of course, but I, he hooked me up with two tickets for the Sportsman Bash. Me and my youngest boy are going to go and we're super excited for that. We're psyched or siced, I guess. I don't know. I'm too old to say that word. And also EDC is planning to have a table at the Health and Wellness Fair. The last thing I want to, I want to just close my comments with, I noticed on the green team comments, I wanted to underscore that they're working on a dedication plaque for Nancy Furley. And I know that many of us knew Nancy, who has passed away. And many of us love Nancy. I mean, I didn't know her. I can't say that I loved her, but I knew her personally. She was such a dedicated servant for the town. Boy, did she love the town. You know, and that's going to be a special day. You know, things like that are, super small town. That's just a great thing because we can. And thanks to Valerie and her team over there, you know, planning that. Thank you.
She was a beautiful woman. Thank you, Greg. Keith?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to, to follow up on, on what Charlie was saying about his committee. I think, you know, really appreciate all the volunteers of the town committees and others, you know. We have three examples that we, you know, approved their appointment, reappointment tonight. So, and, and really it's the volunteers who, who keep this town running and I really appreciate everything that they do. And I also wanted to wish everyone a great three-day weekend. I hope you enjoy.
Thank you, Keith. And Peggy?
Similar, actually a similar thought in that I am ever impressed when we go through the reports of the boards and committees, how much each of those committees is doing and everybody is moving forward with so many projects. It's, it's super impressive. And then I actually just had a particular question, which you may or may not know off the top of your head, Mayor. In the budget, it mentions at the very back, the local taxes rate of .31 hundred, I think. What was last year's rate?
About .73 of a penny higher.
Oh, cool. Thank you. That was it.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have a good evening, everybody, and thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Night.